Welcome back, everyone. It is time now for us to continue tonight's political forum here in Chatham County. And we will do so by visiting District Seven, the incumbent Dean Kickleyer and his challenger, Orlando Scott. Gentlemen, you will have a minute and a half for your opening statement will be a minute for your questions, a minute and a half, that's your answers. And of course, we'll have a follow-up later with a closing statement and that will be one minute. So we'll begin now with our opening statements. And we will begin with Mr. Orlando Scott. You have one minute, sir.
Thank you. Thank you, Tina. Thank you, Ben, for having us here. Thank you, Georgia Southern, for hosting this great forum. My name is Orlando Scott. I am the Democratic candidate for West Chatham District Seven for County Commission. I'm a life, all but ten years a lifelong native of Savannah, Georgia. Went to school here, business degree at Savannah State University. Professionally, I'm a retail district manager, active in the community, an elder in the church and committee member for Pooler June Teeth, excuse me, and just a host of other things. My priorities running will be infrastructure improvements, fair taxation, and just community engagement with not only the residents but the business sector. And thank you for having me.
Thank you. And now, Mr. Kickleyer.
Thank you. One minute?
Yes.
My name's Dean Kickleyer. As stated, I'm the incumbent. I am married, and together we have four adult children. We have five grandkids. My political experience, I was mayor pro temp at the age of 26. I was one of the youngest mayors in the history of the state of Georgia at 28. I then moved on to the county commission. And after serving, I've served many, many years on the county commission. And also served several as chairman pro temp, which I am right now, of the county commission. Having said that, I'm the second youngest person on the county commission. And I'm running because the Seventh District needs better roads, it needs better drainage, it needs someone that'll fight excessive industrial development, someone that'll get rid of the fire fee, and someone with negotiating skills. As I did when I negotiated on live TV with the city of Savannah and came to the lost deal that saved every taxpayer in every city and in the unincorporated area, thousands of dollars a year, I'll apply that with the federal government and others too. And I'm gonna have to finish my intro in the next question.
That's your time. Well, we're gonna begin with you for question number one. So this question is from a student who lives in Puyallup. Is frustrated with the lack of public transit options. In 2022, a small number of Pooler residents voted against increasing property taxes to pay for an expansion of cat buses. As West Chatham continues to grow and bring new job opportunities, what can the county commission do to work with the city of Pooler to expand public transportation options? And is this a priority for you? You have a minute and a half.
Well, the beauty of living in the United States of America is we get to vote on things. And if the citizens there vote for it, have at it. If they vote against it, then it's not there. I'm not their dictator, I'm the representative. I do what they want. And what better thing can you do than let them choose? That's where I've stood from the beginning, and that's where I always stand. Going back to my intro, we need someone that'll fight the excessive industrial development, coming to the Seventh District as I've done when I have stopped a dump once it had already been started. As I've stopped warehouses from coming in, I will stop more in the future. We need someone to get rid of the fire fee. I already have the proposal out there, my proposal, along with Commissioner Pat Farrell that represents the other largest unincorporated area. We need someone with the negotiating skills like I displayed when I owned live television, took over the almost failed negotiations with the city of Savannah and all of the other cities, local option sales tax. Had that failed, everyone's taxes would have gone up. If you don't brag on yourself in politics, nobody knows. They know the bad things, but they don't know the good. I saved loss that day. We need that experience and leadership to remain on this county commission. That's why I'm seeking reelection. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Scott, question. As West Chatham continues to grow and bring new opportunities, what can the county commission do to work with the city of Pooler to expand public transportation options? And is this a priority for you?
Ben, I'll answer your question. We have a community where there is no progressive thinking right now going on. Our current city sitting commissioner makes a lot of noise, but gets nothing done. I am, I will commit, from the transit standpoint, to make sure we have some type of microtransit. I'm not saying running big, large buses into our subdivision and our community, but we need some out-of-the-box thinking to get our citizens out. I run stores in the Pooler community. It is very tough getting frontline workers that live in Pooler. We need some creative thinking to get them from Savannah, to get them from Portland or in other areas into Pooler.
Thirty seconds to respond.
His lack of understanding, experience, and ignorance towards the subject is on full display. If not, he would know that there is absolutely nothing the county commission can do to bring a bus to Pooler, Georgia. Because of the initial setup of CAT, it is a state change, takes a state law change, has nothing to do with us, but it sounds really good. So if you can make something out of nothing, man, that's pretty good. But in this case, your lack of knowledge is very ignorant. And yeah, hell yeah, I'm wild.
Mr. Scott, would you like to respond?
Well, I, again, T-Splash, excuse me. T-Splash is one opportunity that we have to make that change happen. And yes, there are some limitations around the CAT services coming into our Pooler community, but we have individuals from the county commission that sits on the CAT board where we can actually make that change happen.
All right. Thank you. We are moving on to the next conversation. Both candidates have expressed their support for reducing traffic congestion in West Chatham County, we know that's a major issue, through road expansion and construction initiatives. What specific measures do you propose to implement these plans effectively? And Mr. Scott, we will begin with you.
Splash that's coming up with the next term is the single most important issue that, decision-making issue that we'll have as a collective board. My priority around traffic infrastructure would be to have strong capital projects, improvements in pain point areas around West Chatham. For my West Chatham residents, are you tired of sitting in traffic in Pooler Parkway? Are you tired of sitting in traffic on Benton Boulevard, on Pioneer Road, ingressing, egressing out of the Target Connectors? The answer is yes. Everyone that I speak to is frustrated because we've been dealing with the same issues for countless terms, and nothing's getting done. So when I get in, I'll make sure that's a priority going forward and resolve a lot of those issues that we have.
Mr. Kickleyer, what specific measures do you propose to implement these plans effectively when it comes to the traffic congestion in West Chatham County and road expansion?
Tina, at this point in time, I'm so non-political. I would love to see an opponent that knew what in the hell he was talking about. It's very obvious with you telling me to fix a road in Pooler, that you don't understand the structure nor your duties, should you be fortunate enough to get elected by the people. You know absolutely nothing about the structure. Because if you did, you would know that Pooler gets their own amount to work on the roads in Pooler. And yes, we can get more money and subsidize it, because the Pooler Parkway was built under my time there. The, all the roads out there, the reason you live out there, was built under my time out there. It's not the county that does it, it's the cities get their money, we can work with them to help them get their part. And then I would do like I've done in the past and bring home the lion's share of splot monies to my district, like I've done when I got 17 million for flood pumps, when I got all the millions for the roads out there. If you go look it up, you'll see every splot I've been involved in, I've brought by far the majority of the monies home to my one Seventh District, and there's eight districts voting. And mine brings it home. That's because we're no longer the redheaded stepchild like we were when I first got elected. People know we're the future of the county, and we have to invest in the county. I will have lion items placed on the next splot, and we will get the roads built as we should, and it helps Pooler enhance them as we should.
Thank you, Mr. Scott. Thirty seconds for your rebuttal.
Yeah, he's speaking in his little silo where he's operating on his own, but if you would engage with the municipality leaders, we could get a lot of stuff done, but you're saying we can't. So I'll commit to doing that.
Oh, I will too. And as I've done, I thought I had to rebuttal when I was...
Okay, thirty seconds, go.
As I gladly and always do, I've represented all of my cities well. I started with five cities in this district. It's shrunk because of all the amazing growth that's taken place while I was there. And I plan to be there to help guide the growth, because it's coming whether we like it or not. And as you can tell, I will fight to guide that growth in the right direction.
Okay, thank you. Next question. District Seven has many families, schools, and neighborhoods. What plans do you have for recreation and community events? Mr. Kickleyer.
Repeat that, please.
District Seven has many families, schools, and neighborhoods. What plans do you have for recreation and community events?
I plan to bring the lion's share of splot monies home, like I've done in the past, to continue to improve the county facilities that we have. I plan to work with the cities to help them expand in any way that they so choose, but I do not believe in, contrary to what I heard a couple of people say here recently, I don't believe in government duplication of services and duplication of taxes to people. If Pooler's doing something, I'm not gonna charge you and tax you at home. I believe in letting you keep the most money in your own pocket that you can keep. So, support Pooler, support Bloomingdale's, support all the cities to continue doing their fabulous job, enhance the areas that we're supposed to enhance. And it's really simple to be able to do that without having to spend tons of money and double tax the citizens of the county.
Thank you. Mr. Scott, what plans do you have for recreation and community events?
So I live in the unincorporated area of West Chatham County. There is not a single recreation facility there. There is not a community center, there is nothing for our kids. We have to travel to Pooler or Savannah to accommodate those needs. I will tell you, one of the things that, one of the ideas that I have is to have a feasibility study done, if we can get the funding for it, to figure out what specifically we can do in the unincorporated area that our kids can be a part of. Pooler is coming around, they have some great facilities, just created a new tennis court, huge recreation park, and we would do everything in our power when I'm elected to make sure those needs are supported.
Thank you. We are moving on to the next question. The rapid growth driven by the nearby Hyundai plant has raised significant concerns among West Chatham County residents. How do you plan to address the challenges associated with rapid population growth, particularly in terms of infrastructure and public services? And Mr. Kickleyer, let's begin with you.
Thank you. First of all, I plan not to double tax the citizens in areas that it's not any need to do so, and put the money towards the infrastructure. And I don't know why you don't use your fancy clubhouse for a meeting facility, because you have one in your neighborhood. And there's no need for the government to spend money just for the sake of spending money. And there's plenty of community centers throughout our entire community. And, you know, it's the first I've heard, I've never received a phone call from the gentleman recommending anything. I offered to put him on committees to help out, but I hear about, first time I've heard about a clubhouse to my reckless, from him on that.
Thank you.
What was the question?
Okay, Tina, here's what we're going to do. We are going to continue. How much time do you have left? How much? Forty-eight seconds? So I'm gonna allow you to continue. So here is the question. How do you plan to address the challenges associated with rapid population growth, particularly in terms of infrastructure and public service?
Okay, thank you. A multitude of ways. Right now, I could text our governor, and he would most likely text me back within a few minutes. I cut the, I cut the speaker, our congressman's hair this morning, talked to him about the need for future water supplies to be brought into West Chatham County out there, that we need a regional water system. I texted the governor about the road problems, he texted me back, set me up with a video conference with one of the head people. It's called connections. I plan to use those connections, use my experience, use the bringing home of the dollars that I've been bringing home, to bring in more, to fix those infrastructure problems. New growth is nothing, from what I've seen. When I first got elected, we had seven, my district went up to 70,000, now we're down to 30,000.
I know you're off right now, but we're going to move on. Mr. Massey, let me get your thoughts. How do you plan to address the, I'm sorry, I apologize, I apologize. Sorry about that, Mr. Scott. Thank you for checking me, DA. Oh my goodness, there's a lot going on on this stage right now. And I've gotta bring my hand, because he's showing me other papers, so that's my story, I'm sticking to it. Okay, Mr. Scott, now, how do you plan to address the challenges associated with rapid population growth, particularly the infrastructure issues that we're facing in the Seventh District and also public services?
So we need strong capital funding for a lot of projects. You brought up the Hyundai plant. This plant is gonna use 6 million gallons of water a day. To put it in perspective, the city of Savannah uses 60 million gallons of water a day. That's gonna be a huge impact on West Chatham residents, whether you speak to well, citizens with wells or whatever. So environmentally, this will probably be the greatest impact that we have over here. So making sure we get the capital funds. Not only does the commissioner have relationships, I have relationships also with federal, federal elected officials. I've known Senator Warnock for over 50 years. I recently was endorsed by Senator Alsop's office for this seat, and I have several state friends. We won't have a problem with getting funding. It's just making sure we're building and we're engaging with those individuals. Thank you.
Next question. Now that the county is providing fire services, how will you ensure that the new fire department and other Chatham County first responders are equipped to respond to the needs of citizens? Mr. Scott, you take it.
So I applaud the current commission for getting the Chatham County Fire Service. When we had it under CS, it was very problematic. There were a lot of complaints around the fire fee, lack of communication from our current commissioner. They changed the formula three times and never informed anyone. So I'm all for it. I commend Commissioner Whitley for his spearheading the project, and we will continue. It'll take a few years, it'll take a few years to get it fully running, but it was the right thing to do. As far as the fee, we need to turn it to a tax. That way, you can extra it into your mortgage, and also you have a tax benefit. So I'm all for it.
Thank you. Mr. Kickleyer, now that the county is providing fire services, how will you ensure that the new department and other Chatham County first responders are equipped to respond to the needs of citizens?
By providing them with the money they need to run a top-notch firefighting department. I wanna state that right off the bat, that we don't need to tax the citizens for this. I've provided a plan, along with Commissioner Pat Farrell, and I believe it's actually supported by my good friend out there, Mr. Whitley, Commissioner Whitley, where we can absorb, over a period of time, we can absorb the entire fire department budget into the MNO portion, offset with MNO funds, we can absorb it. And we can do so without increasing taxes on the people in the MNO portion of the budget, and without doing anything but getting rid of the fee altogether in the SSD portion of the budget. That'll take a whole lot more than a minute to explain how that would work, but it's been proposed, it will work. And right now, we've got the momentum going, we've held workshops on our idea, we're moving forward, it will be done. And I will rely on Wayne Noah, the former fire chief, who's now gonna be an incoming county commissioner, to help slim that budget back down somewhere closer to the range when he had it, for millions of dollars less with a higher rating.
Okay. We are moving on to the next question. So many considered the Chatham County Commission's efforts in 2022 to negotiate the distribution of $1 billion in revenue from the local option sales tax. To be contentious, how would you approach fostering collaboration and communication between Chatham County and other local municipalities such as the city of Savannah to ensure that all voices are heard and agreements are reached more smoothly in the future? Mr. Kickleyer, we'll begin with you.
Thank you. To set the stage, it was coming down to the wire. It was our last commission meeting, the city of Savannah had a meeting the following, or the following week. And the chairman, on this occasion, had a rough time negotiating any type of deal with the cities. If the deal would have failed, taxes would have gone through the roof, property taxes, for everyone living in the unincorporated areas of the county, and also for everyone in the, each one of our cities in Chatham County. At the final, very last meeting, commission meeting, before this deal was about to fall apart, I took over the negotiations at the commission meeting on live television. I started it with the mayor of Tobe Allen, and then the manager got in, he came, of the city of Savannah came in. Before that manager walked out of that door, I had an agreement with that manager and that mayor, and also with my county commission and chairman. I saved it, and I'll bring those negotiating skills back to the county commission when reelected.
Mr. Scott, how would you approach fostering collaboration and communication between Chatham County and other municipalities such as the city of Savannah to ensure that all voices are heard and agreements are reached more smoothly in the future?
I think it's about being present in our municipalities and engaging with the municipality leaders. I've lived in West Chatham for 14 years. I attend numerous events with the city of Pooler, the Chamber in West Chatham. I have never once seen my commissioner in his government capacity in West Chatham. That is, that is a problem. He talks about these relationships that he has, but I can tell you, if you talk, if you speak with the average West Chatham voter, if you speak with the average West Chatham voter, they will tell you differently. So it's about engagement. I'm from the city of Savannah, so I don't have a problem with engaging, I know most of the, most of the public servants that serve there. I see my good friend in the back, all of them at large, and, you know, we'll be supportive either way, yes.
Thank you. You wanna respond to that, Mr. Kickleyer?
Yeah, I'll just state that my track record's proven. And if anybody remotely dug into everything I've accomplished, you wouldn't even be running.
We're gonna move on. I'm gonna start with you, Mr. Scott, for this one. According to the Chatham County Police Change Jeffrey, Jeff Habery, overall crime in 2023 was down about 9% from the previous year, total crime for the second lowest in a span dating back to 2018. Violent crimes, however, up 37 incidents at the beginning of 2024, the second highest number since 2018. Crime remains a key topic of discussion for local candidates, so what strategies do you think the county council should implement to better address crime? Mr. Scott?
Well, we can't get serious about crime until we solve the E911 issues that we have. We're dealing with an antiquated system that our public has to deal with. Imagine you calling 911 and getting a voicemail. My wife almost died four years ago waiting for a response from our emergency in the county. That's an issue. And we've been dealing with this at least three of his terms, and he hasn't done anything to address the issue there. So we need to fix that, even in our sheriff department. God bless him, he's a walking miracle, I'm glad he's back, but he's working two days a week for four hours. That's a problem. You cannot address, in a jail that's short-staffed and it's overcrowded, you need a full-time representative that's really driving the narrative to push crime, if we're really serious about it.
Thank you. Mr. Kickleyer, what strategies do you think the county council should implement to better address crime?
First of all, I understand what the correct strategies that we're legally allowed to do and implement. The sheriff, constitutional officer, same elected authority that we have as commissioners, he has his own, and this sheriff in the structure chooses not to police anything. He does the jail and protects the courtrooms, that's it. Has nothing to do with fighting crime in our county. And that's his choice. If we don't like it, we can elect somebody else in, but nothing to do with the county commission. To understand how to fight crime, you gotta understand the structure, and to understand the structure, you have to study or have served a little bit. We have a special service district tax, which pays for the Chatham County Police Department, which should be called the Unincorporated Area County Police Department, because it's funded by those people to protect them. I was one of, only out of 18 people that voted against merging with Savannah back in the day. Oh, this tripled the cost back when it did, when that happened, and all the police that the unincorporated area was funding was running out to Savannah to fight it. I was the only one that stood up against it, I fought, took years, but I got it fixed. Unincorporated, Chatham is one of the safer places anywhere around, and I am so proud of this police department that I stood on that limb by myself and fought for, for years, and I got it back. In Chatham County unincorporated area, you're much safer because of that. That's the only area of Chatham County that we have the authority to police, is the unincorporated areas.
Thank you so much. And the next and last question for you gentlemen is about affordable housing, something that so many people are concerned about in our county. What, if anything, can the county do to help with the increasing cost of rental housing in Chatham County? And Mr. Kickleyer, we will start with you.
Thank you. As a commissioner who first came on board with a $12 million deficit, I inherited it, that had to look at nonprofits and cut their funds just to not increase taxes crazy, I always looked for ways to do things without spending an abundance of money. What we can do is, we can simply, through zoning, address this issue by allowing areas to build tiny houses. Tiny homes, less money, that's one way we can do it without the government spending a fortune. As far as other things go, we have, again, I'm totally against duplication of services. We have the city of Savannah with the housing authority, each city, we, in general, look out in the unincorporated areas. That's what we have the authority to do, is change the zoning only in the unincorporated areas. We don't have the authority to do those things in those cities that was stated previously. It would be great, but the reality is, we just don't. And we can do things like that, it would be a simple thing to do, in smaller homes, right now, there's a minimum square footage, and basically every city has minimum square footage of their homes. If those were decreased, then prices could decrease. That's a simple solution to housing that won't cost a taxpayer one dime.
And Mr. Scott, what, if anything, can the county do to help with increasing the cost of rental housing in Chatham County?
I would be open to coming up with solutions, finding subsidies for developers that are interested in developing low-income housing, and we probably need federal help with that. Working with our state legislators to write laws to protect the vulnerable citizens of our community, I think is needed. I'm agrees with him around the tiny homes and homes for veterans. We have to do something. Our veterans are suffering, our homeless population is... Our homeless population is, is, is critical. We ran them out from under Truman Parkway and guess where they're going? They're coming to West Savannah. They're coming to the south side. They're coming to Garden City. They're coming to the unincorporated areas. So we have to find solutions right now. And we need someone that's just not talking about it, that's going to do something about it and reach out to individuals that we can work together to find, to find solutions.
Since I was mentioned there, I'll, like, not thirty seconds. We need someone that wouldn't mention a subsidy when that's already in place. It was on the news yesterday, I believe, about Savannah with the down payment assistance, the housing authority giving down payment assistance along with, I can't remember what they said, but don't triple dip. You know, let, let the citizens donate to the nonprofits that they choose and get their own tax deduction. I don't believe government is smarter than the citizens. I don't think we should take your hard earned money and donate to nonprofits and you not get the opportunity to donate to who you want to and get your tax deduction.
All right. Either side for closing statements now. We're going to begin with you, Mr. Kipley. You have one minute when you're ready.
Don't start. Closing, I'm going to take part of my closing to apologize for getting excited and saying some things in a way I'm not excited about now. But I get very passionate and I do get upset when I hear, God, this here is mean again, nonsense. And again, if you look at my record, folks, I'm probably the most financially conservative commissioner in the history of this county. I have never once in 28 years of politics voted to increase taxes ever before. I'm the one that's there. I was getting a little, how many seconds? Did you hold? I'm sorry. Fifteen? All right. I'm there for you if you'll have me again. I want to put in four more years because Splash is coming up again. And like I said, I bring home the bulk. I want to do it again and then I want to get out. I'm not dying to stand up and get ticked off over and over for 100 more years, but I've got things I have to finish. I've got to finish the fire fee elimination.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate that.
And these roads.
Mr. Scott, one minute to you.
Thank you again, Ben and Tina, for, for having us. You know, I just want to serve. I'm a public servant by heart. My community record speaks for itself. Professionally, I'm responsible for millions of dollars in, in, in proven laws. I have the experience. I have the interpersonal skills that can relate across the board to a wide range of people. And the citizens of West Chatham deserve someone that's engaged, that's someone that has their best interests at heart and is going to fight to the root for them. So again, I'm Orlando Scott and I'm asking for your vote this coming November. Thank you.
Let's hear it for the candidates for District Seven. Thank you so much for your time. We'll take a quick five minutes to run back to talk about the mission chart.